I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call roll. Guy.
Here.
Hurdle.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Longtime.
Here.
Whitmer.
Here.
Item number three.
Make a motion through the board of the agenda.
Second.
Discussion. Call roll.
Hudson.
Yes.
Guy.
Yes.
Hurdle.
Yes.
Markham.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number four, superintendent.
First thing I want to talk about is Race to the Top. This is year four for Race to the Top. It was a hundred thousand dollar grant. We have approximately a little less than seventeen thousand dollars left in that grant. The majority of that went towards professional development. We really geared that over the last three years and are going to finish this last year with professional development. Some of the progress that we've made are things like the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, the Ohio Principal Evaluation System. Those are things that we received training in, both principals and staff. Also, a great deal of time is spent on formative assessment, also known as FIP, modules that staff has gone through and principals. We've worked on academic content standards, curriculum alignment and mapping, data analysis, a great deal of literacy collaborative project down at the elementary school along with Oregon Gillingham and the Wilson Reading. We did balanced literacy strategies and then this year here, we're going to be focusing on closing some of our gaps. Last meeting, we shared a little bit about the report card, how value-added plays into it. And our value-added reports are things that we're going to spend a great deal of time on. We've already met with the Educational Service Center, some of the regional value-added specialists. We have two district value-added specialists within the district. And we're going to use the resources with the ESC and internal resources to provide some professional development time with rolling subs to staff. Not only that, some of the new standards that are going to get, that are rolling out, we want to make sure we're ready to go when those tests come about. So this year's pretty well planned out. We have a transformational team with that Race to the Top and they're a great deal of the reason why the professional development is rolled the way that it was and is now. So that's the direction we're going with Race to the Top. I think that's a report that the state expects that we provide to Board of Education. I'll continue to keep you updated through each of the meetings. I'll ask Mr. Hostettler to help me out here. Several years ago, we had a policy change which included Ohio Core opt-out option. It gave us another opportunity for students to graduate alternatively to some extent. We have an option where the student choosing to take this option. So I'm going to let Mr. Hostettler kind of roll out to you a little bit about what Ohio Core is and some of the things and where the changes were. So this really is, correct me if I'm wrong, 2014 graduating class is the last class that will have this opportunity.
Yes, we, basically the opportunity is going to exist for about three more years. And what it basically does, when the state of Ohio updated the core curriculum, they added another math course. So the regular course will be now Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, and then another higher than Algebra II math. The state of Ohio put the opt-out for certain situations where a student wants to take another math other than Algebra II as a higher level math. We're looking at either three or four credits, but not necessarily Algebra II. It might be more of an application-based math course. And this would be, there are some consequences for going through the opt-out. One of the major consequences is right now, there are only three state schools that will accept the student if they choose this route to graduate. Those include Shawnee State, Youngstown State, and Central State. However, all community colleges will still accept the student. They require them to go through a course load of ten remedial courses to catch up for that missing class. It's very important that we sit down with the student and the parents to explain to them that there are consequences to this and that they understand. They also have to work with us to fill out a career pathway so that they're ready for graduation and they know what path they're going to take because this is so limiting in terms of going on to a higher education. But again, the students that might take this probably have already determined that a regular state school is probably not in their best interest. We were contacted by the Columbiana County Vocational Schools. So they have one of our students and he is interested in this, so I wanted to bring that to you.
You know, one thing that we will also talk about maybe in the future is that the legislature may extend this option. And I think you're going to find that it puts a great deal more pressure on our career and Texas Center students right now. Some of those students aren't getting up through that Algebra II option and they're more hands-on, more career-based, more career-planned. So I think the legislature is probably going to have to revisit this and make some determinations that if that is the case, that they go through one of these career plans and they continue to move forward with that process. We happen to have a student who is really not interested, not good at, chooses really not to move forward with that math option, maybe not gearing themselves towards a college plan, but more towards a career-ready plan. And so those are some of the options that we're looking at right now. This is the first time we've actually encountered it even since we put the board policy in place. So we wanted to make you aware of that in case that's something that comes up as a concern down the road. A little bit about the November bond issue. We are continuing to have bond issue meetings. We have another one this coming up Monday. And Danny Clancy is continuing to run that. We have signs going out in yards. We currently have groups put together to, you know, make those phone calls to many supporters that we need to make sure they get out and vote. Looking at potentially a reverse trick-or-treat, try and get the word out as well. And, you know, what is the impact is what, kind of what I put up here, what's the impact of passing this? If this passes, this takes a great deal of pressure off of our general revenues for operating. I know I've been telling you this, how important this is. I just want to continue to echo that. Part of the reason I want to echo that is that, you know, we still get folks that don't have all the information. So we've really got to continue to pound the pavement and get the information out there. We have individuals that don't understand why so long, why is it 29 years? Why would we stretch this loan so long? Well, I mean, first of all, it adds value to the building. It adds value and it adds longevity to the building which permits us to take a loan over a longer period of time. And that's critical, to understand that. Same thing happens with a car loan. You know, you don't pay that money upfront. With a shorter amount of time, you have the opportunity to stretch those dollars and that's why the structure of that is the way it is. You know, for instance, the cost of a 1.23 mil levy is $2,153 without that rollback. Although I don't foresee that the legislature is going to bring that back into effect for November so that it comes back to that $18 mark. We're looking at $2,353 for $50,000 value of a house, not valuation, but value. The valuation at $50,000, $17,500. In 29 years, if we were to pay that all upfront, ask someone to do that on a $50,000 home upfront, it'd be $624.37. That's one, to have them pay that upfront, we're taking that $600 and stretching it out so that we're realizing that it's much less in the short run. $23 in a year, $2153 in a year, and $179 per month, a dollar seventy-nine per month. I don't know that it's a lot to ask. I think it's a valued asset in our district. We're really hoping that folks get behind us. And we'll continue to push out the information. We've had plenty of opportunities for folks to come out to the building, to see the structure, to see what's going on. Just recently had a chili cook-off there and had a great deal of events with opportunities to tour the building. We did have some families that moved into the district because they saw Joshua Dixon. They said, wow, what a beautiful facility you have. And we didn't realize the middle school was in the state that it was. And so they're starting to see as well. So some of those, some of those parents, even at Joshua Dixon, have not been out to the middle school to see the state. And some of our, some of our parents that have since gone from the middle school never return back to the middle school for anything generally, once they get to the high school level. A lot of what their business is with education really happens at the high school and beyond after they get through middle school. So getting those people back to see it and getting those people that have kids moving forward to that are a big process for us.
I'd point out one thing on the cost of the bond issue. The other thing that I don't think that we've talked about enough is that over the 29-year period, the bond issue will be readjusted each year depending on the valuation of the district. So as we have new construction or we have reappraisal or triennial update where the property values increase, the millage for the bond issue will decrease over that 29 years. So the $600 and some dollars that it would cost if you paid it all upfront today will actually be less over the 29 years because of those adjustments as values increase.
That's great information. I know that that's been some misunderstanding out in the community now and we hope to get that message out. Straight A grant fund applications, all of you are probably hearing that. Over the next two years, there's $100 million and $150 million in fiscal year 2014, 2015. We are into several different grants, two with the ESC as a consortium, four local. We're looking at some blended learning opportunities as a local consortium with a couple of other school districts here in Columbiana County. Transportation, we're looking at as a district to have some opportunities potentially to decrease costs over the long term for transportation. Renewable energies, specifically solar energy is something that we're looking into. And STEM education in the district through the middle school specifically. I know Mr. Buzzard is working on that. We also are looking at blended learning consortium through the ESC and transportation grant applications through the ESC. We have a short turnaround to get that out. We're hoping to be considered for some of these. We don't have any rubrics at this moment to guide us, but we're going to begin writing as if we have a clear understanding as to what we can go for and potentially in the long run, systemically save some dollars for the district down the road. So those are some of the ideas behind that and we are applying for probably as many as we are capable of with our limited staff. That's it on my superintendent's report. The only thing that I'll add is that as of Friday, you did not have on your agenda, but do have on your agenda, the teaching contract which was ratified by our teaching staff last night. So that's why I so quickly turn around on your agenda change. And I know that's something that we're going to talk about. The only thing that I can add at this moment, prior to you considering the vote for that, is that I appreciate the folks that were involved in the negotiating process. It was, say the least, longer than anticipated, but I think we were careful and cautious from both ends to move forward with the things that we needed to do, both for the sake of the staff, the district, our students and our parents in this community. And I would also say that the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System during this round of negotiations, we put a monkey wrench into a lot of folk, a lot of places outside of Columbiana. And I think when we were able to get down and really talk about Columbiana and Columbiana's teachers with the administration and a short staff that didn't include some outside entities, we were able to really narrow down where we needed to be on this contract. And I think that as you reviewed the contract, you're going to find that it's pretty fair and equitable on both ends. And that's all I have for you on the report.
Thank you. Item number five, the official chief of department report.
Hello. Hi, I'm going to give Tina a little break tonight and we'll do all the talking. I'm just here to tell you about a new program where Columbiana was chosen as one of our pilot schools. It's called Farm to Fork, buzzwords, farm to school, farm to table. Been in the media over the last, you know, probably a couple of years or so. So we did attend the farm to school conference. We had center director of programs to that in Ohio last year, farm to schools conference. And then several of us went to a local one as well. We're trying to figure out a way that we can make this happen in our schools that would be affordable and that we could actually do. So as a company, we decided to put this Farm to Fork program together and just do it in limited places to see how it works out before we would try to do it company-wide. And what we do is we have farms in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and West Virginia that have come together with our produce supplier that we're using for this. And Tina will place an order for whatever the featured vegetable is for the week. We're doing it at the high school, one day a week for nine weeks. We've already done corn on the cob, watermelon, zucchini, and green beans or tomorrow. So the order will come into East Palestine, that's my other pilot school. Tina picks it up on her way in, we prepare it, she has recipes to do it. She'll do a little display to show what the product looks like before it's cooked. And we have heard, you know, not necessarily here, but in other places, that sometimes this is the only time that students have tried something that's been fresh like that. Even I heard that a student had never had corn on the cob before. Things that we take for granted and it's just so, if you can reach out and hit some of those kids, it's very successful. So we're halfway through right now. We have some signs that we also put up. And at the end of the program, at the end of the nine weeks in November, we will do a big feast with as many of the vegetables that we can, you know, at the end of the growing season. So you will all be invited to that. And we wanted to get the elementaries involved as well. So at the elementary, they get different kinds of apples. And a lot of kids don't realize how many different kinds of apples there are. So Tina works with the produce supplier and they let her know what's available that week and then that way she can order, you know, different kinds of apples. And the kids have been very, very excited about it. So we just want to let you know that that's what we were doing. And these are just some of the different signs that we've done, just with some fun facts. And there's some recipes on there that the kids could take home if they wanted to.
I know Kim and Tina have been bombarded by me with articles and places about some things like this. Good stuff.
Yeah, you might have been driving. Thank you. Item number six, principals' reports.
I'm also heading to Joshua Dixon. And it's in board chair, I guess. In board chair, now it might be a little hard to read horizontally, but if you hit enable editing on the top of it, it looks more like a one-page report. And under curriculum and professional development, literacy collaborative coaching sessions continue for three through six. Language arts teachers, Melanie Strohberger is doing those with help from Ohio State University. Our professional development plan for 2013, Mr. Mook mentioned about using Race to the Top funds for a lot of professional development. We're going to set our, center a lot on SLOs. In addition to the student learning objectives, Mahoney County ESC is doing something a little different this year. Rather than pulling a teacher leader out of class four times throughout the year and that teacher having to get time somehow to share with their grade level when they come back all of the information, they're doing it in the evenings now from 4:30 to 7:30 and all teachers aren't invited to attend. They already put out an agenda and they put out dates for teachers to go on and say they want to go. We're going to also be doing some value-added training and start that tomorrow with support from Mahoney County ESC for fourth and fifth grade teachers, especially with student growth measures coming into play with the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System as an additional piece of the 50% in order to do a professional growth plan or improvement plan. The teacher evaluation system is underway. I'll be starting Monday with my first teacher observation. I have done several walkthroughs already, but I wanted to wait till everything was in place before I started that. Third grade took the fall reading OAA today. Those will, I'll be shipping those to Mr. Buzzard on Friday to go back. Walk-throughs and formal classroom observations are underway. Race to the Top update, Mr. Mook kind of touched on this too. Transformation team met and we worked up one of our individual building professional development plans. Under student achievement, third grade reading guarantee, by September 30th, all schools have to administer the Ohio Diagnostics Reading Screener and/or a vendor assessment for the third grade reading guarantee to see if kids need to be put on a plan. I'm glad we didn't buy a vendor assessment. We went with the Ohio Diagnostic Screener because that had to be done anyway. So we didn't do double work. We'll still be doing benchmarking, but I moved that date to October 18th. We'll be looking at value-added data and we're still looking at our response intervention data with IAT meetings and we have purchased our math, which is just another benchmarking like language arts. Under health and wellness, the staff had some medical training at a staff meeting with Mrs. Costle. The Columbiana bus drivers came and did bus safety unit with our students. The Lions Club did vision screenings, Mrs. Cody did hearing screenings. The Columbiana Fire Department will be visiting Friday for Fire Prevention Week. Crisis Plan has been updated and submitted to the Attorney General. DARE lessons are underway for 12 weeks with Officer Bowley. That's fifth grade only. He'll also be coming in on Red Ribbon Week. And Mr. Mook has shared with us, Camphell Productions puts out a program for character education, but it hits on everything, including valuing others, some bullying prevention. And district-wide will be kicking off our Orbeez Bullying Prevention and Character Education with their program on Monday. I listed some upcoming events. One of the things I would like to point out is I'm working with all the resources in Columbiana County to put together a Family Community Resource Fair and that's on the 23rd at 6 o'clock. Next PTO is the 23rd as well at 6 o'clock at Southside Middle School. If you're up for some real fun, Pitcher Day starts tomorrow, it's two days. And our Fall Fun Day Parade of Costumes is on the 31st. That's it for Dixon.
Southside Middle School, good news report. Try not to repeat anything. Athletics, Southside Middle School's fall sports teams are finishing up their season. Cross-country's finished. Football has a game Thursday and then they will do their annual game at Firestone next Thursday under the lights. Seventh grade volleyball's finished. Our eighth grade volleyball team is playing at this moment in Wellsville at the championships and we think they have a pretty good chance of possibly bringing home a championship on Saturday. September 25th, an open house was held at Southside Middle School. The event was very well-attended. Parents were given a chance to meet with the teaching staff and view their child's rooms. The teachers took advantage of the opportunity to discuss their courses and the course requirements with the parents. Race to Top Professional Development, Mrs. Sharshin already mentioned this, but we're using Race to the Top funds to pay for our professional development here in the upcoming weeks. Staff members from Southside Middle School will be working on student learning objectives, student growth measures, and also becoming familiar with the new PARC testing procedures. PARC testing will begin next year. It is a computerized system. The predictions are that most school scores are going to go down a great deal. And we're trying to prepare our students and ourselves as well as we can for the computerized testing, which will come into play in the 2014, 2015 school year. We were able to, with Jason's help, we're going to be doing a field test for PARC in the spring to give our students and our teachers a chance to have a practice run before they count. Teacher evaluation, as Mrs. Sharshin said, is off and running. We have some new evaluation procedures. These procedures, they're designed to help teachers have growth and improvement throughout their careers. Student grades, interns were sent out on October 4th. We're busy providing assistance and intervention to students that need help. We have tutoring available both during the school day and after school. And the first grading period will be ending here on October 25th, coming up quickly. Important dates, as Mrs. Sharshin mentioned, are school-wide assembly on Monday. Our picture makeup day is October 24th. And coming up quickly is the Southside Middle School and Columbiana High School Veterans Day Program, which is always a nice activity if you're able to. I've been around a long time and our Veterans Day activity here is the best I've ever been associated with. So if you're able to get that, that is in the high school, in the gym at 1:30 on November 11th. That's the Southside Middle School, good news report.
Okay, high school report is also under board chair. Under academics and curriculum, as Dave and Kim pointed out, we're undergoing professional development, gearing up with SLO training. We'll be starting the 23rd and we're going for four two-hour sessions with their teachers. The PSAT test, which I believe Mrs. Whitmer talked about last board meeting, we are, we're set to go, we're going to be giving that, what was the?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, next Wednesday. All 10th graders are going to be taking it this year. This will give us some data regarding college and career readiness. Also give us a head start on when Ohio makes that mandatory next year. We'll also have some juniors taking the test. They use that, the test results to compete in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Follow GTs will be given the week of October 28th. And we have an advanced placement parent meeting on October 15th. This is part of our, the grant that we were awarded last year as far as enhancing our AP offerings and things like that. So we're going to meet with all the parents next week at 6:30. Under student events, this is prom fundraising season and junior class has been working really hard on fundraising for the prom. They're currently running a coffee, cider, and tea shop at the high school. It's been very interesting to see them go through this process. It's almost like a mini-business course. They're learning about, you know, how much profit they can make and it's been very fun to watch them do that. They're also planning a tailgate party for the Crestview game, so be prepared for flyers for that. Junior parents are also getting going. They're planning a tailgate party for the United game and several other opportunities. First speech tournament will be Saturday, November 2nd, using high school and middle school. I got the chance, first time to see that last year and it was a great event, so. Mr. Buzzard touched on the veterans' assembly, I had that as well. More winding down fall sports season, boys golf, the season is completed. They finished second in their sectional tournament and they competed in the district tournament. Girls golf, they finished an undefeated 15-0 season, finished second in the sectional tournament. They did a great job. Cross-country, we had two big meets here at the end of the season in the... In the, the, one meet we hosted seven schools and the Clipper Invitational, we hosted 17 schools. It was a great event. Their season, they have, on the 19th, they have districts at Malone College. Boys soccer, currently they're 5-9-1. They finish up tomorrow at United Local. And in tournaments, they will be involved Tuesday, the 15th versus Hartland at South Range at 4 o'clock. Girls soccer, they're currently 7-6-1. They have a couple of big home matches. On the 9th, they host, we host United Local. Saturday, the 12th, they're home against Maplewood, that'll be senior night at 11:00 AM, senior day maybe. And tournaments, they will compete Thursday, the 17th. They're going to host the winner of Crestview versus Springfield, having a very good season. Volleyball is currently 12-6. Thursday, they're at home against Western Reserve, that'll be senior night. Saturday, they're home with a varsity quad match at 10:00 AM. And tournaments, they will be competing at Lisbon, against Lisbon, Monday at 7:30. Football, currently 2-4, couple very good showings by the Clippers recently and some big games coming up, most, more notably against South Range at home on the 11th and Crestview on the 25th. That concludes my.
Dave, do you have Chloe? You want to gather her up?
Did she run away from you?
Chloe Gillespie is here tonight. Chloe was in the paper recently for her duct tape dresses that are being on display and sold and I think she'll tell you the lady who bought them downtown in Lisbon, who is selling those in Lisbon, but really nice, we've done some duct tape dances over the past and it was really nice to see us get recognized or have her recognized for something a little different than maybe academics or athletics, it was something that she created and made several dresses that were on display and all those dresses then went and were sold and the lady in downtown Lisbon has those in display for sale, so. I think Mr. Buzzard's trying to gather Chloe up right now.
Says one thought.
Come on.
Introduce yourself.
This is Chloe.
I'm Chloe. I'm Patty Clark.
And Chloe, these are for sale in what location downtown in Lisbon?
Fashion Forward.
Fashion Forward. How many dresses did you have?
Seven.
Seven? She created, designed purses, accessories. Were there a couple of shoes that they said that you made as well?
There was two pairs of shoes.
Two pairs of shoes. They're not, you don't have those today, are you?
Now, how long did they take you to make one dress?
Some of them took a while.
Some took a while, roughly?
Six to 13 hours.
Six to 13 hours. Very cool.
Those are real nice.
Did you use sewing chains all along? No. I didn't know. Sometimes I know people use sewing chains on the idea. Very cool.
So how much duct tape does it take to make a dress?
It just really depends on the size, like the size and the style of the dress.
So you can get all those different colors in duct tape later?
Just a baby duct tape.
In fact, one of the best selections I've seen is right here in, at Base Hardware. They have, I was in there, they had about 30 colors.
Five for love.
Are those dresses comfortable?
You can't wear the side down. Do you have your designer tag on the inside? Design. Now.
We've had duct tape dances the last two years and I know they're, I know that whenever they make their clothes, they're often worn. I know the kids, and they've been dancing in them.
No hair at all.
Yeah, there's not much of them.
Chloe, what grade are you in? Southside Middle?
7th.
7th grade.
That is very cool. Thank you, very cool.
It's always nice to see, you know, finding time to do something about their studies and school activities and you have something else that takes a lot of time. High school spec.
And so does that draw your home office staff?
You guys, they're both very good students.
And she's taking orders for the next step.
We could need a little more tech.
Very nice.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 8?
I'd like to make a motion to consider an executive session to review negotiations and for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law rules or state statutes as defined by ORC 121.22.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdor?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Ronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are in the executive session.
Who will do that?
Sure. Okay.
I move to consider approving the minutes of June 11th, 2013, and July 9th, 2013, and August 13th, 2013, and September 10th, 2013, regular meetings.
A second, Matt.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hurdor?
Yes.
Ronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 10?
Make a motion to consider approving the September 2013 financial reports.
A second, that motion.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Ronco?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hurdor?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 11?
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the five-year forecast as presented by the Treasurer.
Second.
Discussion?
Lori, it looks like in the summary that in general, the five-year forecast looks positive, but you have some concerns. Do you want to just highlight what the concerns are?
Well, my main concern obviously is the Southside Middle School. You know, right now I have $500,000 built into the forecast as a contingency in case the bond issue doesn't pass. If it doesn't pass and the board chooses to replace the roof and use $500,000 and who knows how much more, you know, those dollars would have to come out of general fund. There are no other funds for those, for that to come out of. My concern is that, you know, I have only the roof built in, there are many more things that need to be done to the middle school in order to get it up to operational. You know, we'll have ceiling tile, we'll have insulation, we'll have, you know, on and on. The heating system is old. We've had issues with breakage over the past several years. I can see it becoming, you know, the virtual money pit over the next several years until we're able to actually fix things properly. So I really don't have those kinds of costs continue to be built in there or, you know, that type of thing. So that is my huge concern over the next several years and, you know, that could be alleviated if the bond issue passes in November. If it doesn't, then I think we're, you know, heading down a very rough road and we're going to have some tough decisions to make.
So would it be fair to say, that was my question, I think, $500,000 is being pretty conservative.
Very conservative.
And that might only be the roof itself.
Right. And it may not even cover the roof and the related costs in order to get the roof and, you know, just the building open again. I don't know that that's a high enough number. So, you know, I am very concerned with that. And I'm also concerned that, you know, we, we're looking at deficit spending forecasted beginning in 2016. This is a better position than where we've been in the past somewhat because we have realized some savings partly due to the closure of half of the building at Southside. We've had some retirements, we've had some resignations that occurred that allowed us to move some staff around. We actually did not replace a position on one of the late resignations that we had this year. We had some savings in the custodial area that we hadn't anticipated due to a resignation and then also the restructuring of custodial staff due to cleaning less square footage, you know, due to the closure of part of the building. So, you know, as far as salaries, we're, you know, in a better position than where we were in the May forecast, which helped us get closer to spending in the black when you take out the, you know, the Southside assumption that we'll spend the $500,000. But even if you take out that $500,000, we're still looking at deficit spending in a few years without some further changes, whether it be through retirements or reduction in staff or whatever it takes to, you know, to bring expenses in line with what our revenues are. We are fortunate on state money projections as far as we're on the positive side of the formula for the first time in many years where we're actually looking at a potential increase in state money due to the new funding formula. However, due to the losses that we've had over the last several years of federal stimulus dollars and intangible personal property reimbursement reductions, we will not be back at the fiscal year 11 level of income until at least fiscal year 17. So we really aren't recouping those losses, but we are seeing an increase from last year to this year, even though we'll still be at a lower level than what we were in fiscal year 11 with those other sources. Couple of other line items on the forecast that I wanted to bring to your attention. The real estate revenue, if you look at, it's the first line on the forecast. If you look at fiscal year 14 projection compared to the fiscal year 13 actual, there's a drop there and that drop is due to in fiscal year 13, we collected one-time delinquency collection from Firestone Farms. I'm sure we saw that in the paper and we did see that delinquency come through in fiscal year 13, which obviously won't be repeated again this year. So we actually will see somewhat of a drop there in that revenue. But then from fiscal year 14 on out, I'm projecting a conservative increase with the expectation that there'll be some economic recovery, hopefully, and hopefully also additional dollars due to construction of new homes in the district and reappraisal, triennial updates that'll occur over the next several years. Increases, also projected increases in the income tax, again with the expectation that there'll be somewhat of an economic recovery and additional dollars with new construction in the district, which brings more people into the district, which means more people are paying the income tax that we're looking at. Hopefully, an increase in income tax there. Our July income tax settlement in looking at last July was higher than what it was just a year ago, so I'm hoping that that trend continues throughout the remainder of the payments this year. So I do expect somewhat of an increase there. Casino revenue, that's reflected in the unrestricted grants and aid line, which is also our state money that I just talked about, that we are on the positive side of the funding formula. The casino revenue is a part of that. We've got our first casino revenue payment in fiscal year 13. The revenue went into effect beginning January of 2013, so in essence in 13, we basically got a half a year of revenue. This year will be our first year of full revenue. In fiscal year 13, we got just under $22,000 and this year we're projected to get about $52,000. That is one-half of 1% of our total revenue, so it's not quite the windfall that's being, you know, touted in the media that, you know, casino money is going to save schools. At this point, we're not seeing that that will be the case. I briefly touched on expenditures and then our bottom line. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those at this time.
You answered a lot, like.
Well, you said 2010's receipts were about $170,000 less than '09 due to poor economic conditions and you said that 2012 receipts were about 10% higher than the previous year. What's the dollar figure in that 10% you know of, Dan?
A 10% on the, that's on the income tax. That would have been about $160,000, $150,000 that year.
Higher than the previous year?
Higher?
Higher, yes.
About 10% higher, so you would say that 10 receipts were about $170,000 less than 10% higher, you're saying there's about $160,000 more than the following year, so you're getting back about where you were always before then.
Right. The other revenue that the media and homeowners, residents, the papers are always picking up on is gas and oil money. We've seen nothing more from the district. We did obviously lease our land, we saved our sign-on bonus two years ago. We have not received any additional revenue since that time because the, you know, it's not flowing, you know, at this point in time. We don't really anticipate our residents are seeing any kind of money. The only district in the county that I'm aware of that has received anything since the signing bonus is United Local and they received $29. That was burn-off revenue apparently, something, it was called something like that, so they're getting a whopping $29 and we're getting nothing and my understanding is no other district in the county has gotten anything either and doesn't anticipate to get anything, you know, anytime within these next few years.
So they received a shut-in payment revenue? Was it shut-in?
It was burnt, like a burn-off payment, something like that. And they have more acreage than what we have here and, you know, to amount it, I think it was $29.78 or something to that, so you can see that it's not, definitely wasn't a huge revenue for them. They don't anticipate any money this year from anything from the gas and oil, please.
When's the next property evaluation? Is it 15?
In 13, we're looking at, this is triennial update. Mahoning County is one year behind, so Mahoning County will be 14. So our property is about 25%. It's Mahoning County, 75% Columbia County, so we, that's how the cycle kind of runs. We almost see somewhat of an increase anytime property values increase during a triennial update or appraisal, four out of six years because of the difference in the. update or appraisal for added six years because of the difference in the counties being on different cycles. Any other questions? Thank you.
Call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 12.
I'd like to consider approving Ohio Schools Council Cooperative Purchasing Program membership, including A E P A for year 14, a cost of $200 per district, plus 18 cents per pupil, minimum $350, and maximum $2,000, with an additional fee of $3,200 for 20 hours use of the legal hotline program.
Second.
Ms. Besch, call the roll.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 13.
I'd like to consider accepting the resignation of Carlos Spade, aide effective September 28th, 2013.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 14.
I'd like to make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Debbie Dunlap, aide effective September 21st, 2013.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Bronco?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 15.
I'd like to make a motion to consider accepting the resignation of Scott Knox, head varsity baseball coach.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 16.
I'd like to consider approving a leave of absence for Joanie Campbell, grade 2 teacher effective September 3rd, 2013, through the end of the school year.
Second.
Discussion? Motion? Call the roll.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 17.
Would you consider approving employment of the following personnel for the 2013-14 school year, recommended by the superintendent, compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules, and retroactive to the first day of work pending verification of credentials as listed below.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 19.
I'm sorry, 18. Item. I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the following as a volunteer for pupil activity program for the 2013-14 school year, as recommended by the superintendent. Testation imagination coordinator volunteer Stephanie Baylor, and wrestling coach volunteer Bob Davis.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Bronco?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now, item 19.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the employment of the following personnel in a supplemental contract for the 2013-14 school year, as recommended by the superintendent, with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules. Interact advisor, shared contract maker, Stephanie Baylor.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 20.
I'd consider approving Sunday, May 25th, 2014, as class of 2014 commencement date.
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 21.
I'd like to consider approving the sixth grade Kent Fitch field trip from Monday, May 5th, 2014, through Wednesday, May 7th, 2014.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 22.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving the change in the contract status from probationary to regular for Brendan Malott, bus driver, effective November 1st, 2013, as recommended by superintendent.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Bronco?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 23.
I'd like to make a motion to consider a first, second, and approval of the following new policies, provisions, and replacements to board policy, specifically standard-based teacher evaluation.
I'd like to second that.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 24.
Consider first reading of the following new policies, provisions, and replacements to board policy. And they are all listed below.
And there is no action required? Item 25.
I'd like to consider approving the negotiated master contract between the Columbia Education Association and Columbia Exemptive Village Board of Education, effective July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2016. Contract provided with the agenda.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 26.
I'd like to consider approving employment of the following personnel as director, supervisor, or coach of a pupil activity program for the 2013-14 school year, as recommended by superintendent with compensation in accordance with board-approved schedules pending verification of all credentials. Head varsity softball coach, Jerry Zaltman.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Bronco?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 27.
I'd like to make a motion to consider approving a contract from Mahoning County Education Service Center for a 2013-14 school year, web-based high school credit recovery program, cost of $300 for administrative fee and 75 per student, unlimited courses.
Discussion? Call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
Hurdle?
Yes.
Bronco?
Yes.
Whitmer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 28. President's report. I'd like to thank all of the teachers, administrators, and the negotiating team. Everybody has worked very diligently to come to a ratified contract. Also, for all their dedication to putting our kids first, working through the beginning of the school year, and making it successful, and making it a great environment, and for the continued excellence that we are so proud to be a part of here in Columbia. Thank you. Item number 29. OSBA Legislative Liaison Report. Item number 30. OSBA Student Achievement Liaison Report.
A report.
Thank you. Item 31.